Put that up.
Read it.
Government Executive.
Uh-uh.
Hey, my goodness, I'm glad you own that whole bus system.
I don't have anything to do with.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
I feel bad for him, too, I think I want to see if I can go see him.
Yeah, he's a fireman.
Work those hospitals, not your.
You're asking him if we could go out there, see how he is. We asked him. I'm asking where his doctors live. I know, quite a few doctors have moved their hospital privileges out there.
Yeah, because they don't know Spanish.
Oh, it is, okay.
But they could.
Nothing can get worse if you guys want to do something about it.
On Lewisville, yeah, what they said, that they can own some of the office space. They do in condos, so they're going to write up on their office space.
Turned patients, sir. Okay, uh, maybe, I haven't committed yet.
Ready, did you?
There we go.
Ready, here we go.
This seven o'clock, we do have a quorum, we'll call the city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda tonight is the invocation given by Councilman Guerina and the pledge to both the American and Texas flag led by Councilman Ferguson.
Would you bow with me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, Lord, to ask your blessings. Lord, we ask that you bless the city, the state, and bless this country. Lord, we also ask you that you take care of those and give comfort to those that have been affected by the recent storms and the storms that are happening today. That you comfort those families that have lost loved ones and comfort those who have lost everything that they have. Lord, we know that nothing goes by without your knowledge and your will, Lord, and we truly, truly ask that you watch over us and guide us. Lord, thank you, we love you, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated.
That bear with us tonight, we have a technical difficulty, one of our screens is out, so the other one should be fully functional. Next item on the agenda is consideration of items relating to the May 11th, 2013 City of Louisville general election, will be canvas of election returns for the city council general election. Julie.
In place, I'm sorry, in place number four, Greg Tierney received 878 votes for 51.38%. John Guerina received 831 votes for 48.62%. In place number five, Raymond Daniels received 777 votes for 47.79%. Rudy Durham received 849 votes for 52.21%, and we had a total of 1,740 voters.
Thank you, Julie. Next item is consideration of resolution declaring the results of the city council election. Councilman Ferguson.
I move to accept the canvas of the votes and second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve the canvassing of the votes as presented, and a second by Councilman Guerina, three discussion.
Um, I'll, my speech afterwards, it's fine.
Well, you need to do it now.
Okay, well, let's talk about it now. Well, as you know, I'll be stepping down and want you to join me in welcoming Mr. Tierney to the dais when he gets sworn in. But I want to tell everybody that it's been an honor, you know, you think about duty, honor, and country. It's been an honor serving the citizens of Louisville in this capacity, and it's been fantastic. I want to thank the staff and the employees of the city. You have made this job wonderful, and it's an honor to work with you and serve with you. I take my duty personally, as you know, and try to do it at the highest integrity possible. And I'm so glad that we have employees that also take their job with high integrity and their duty seriously also. And last country, you know, this city is my home, and, sorry, allergies, the city is my home and we definitely, well, I'm not going anywhere. I started out there in the audience and that's where I'm going. I'll be watching, I'll be participating as much as any citizen should be, and I encourage other citizens to come, fill these seats every two weeks or twice a month when we have our meetings, and make sure that we continue with the duty, honor, and country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your service. Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Julie, she'll join me down front, Councilman Durham, you'll join me down front. Mr. Tierney. Mr. Tierney, you come up, please, sir.
All right. Certificate of election, this is certified that Rudy Durham at the general election in the City of Louisville, Texas on the 11th day of May 13, 2013, by virtue of having received a majority of the votes cast, has been elected Councilman Place Number Five of the City of Louisville, Texas, and was on the 20th day of May, 2013, certified by canvas of the vote of the city council of the City of Louisville, Texas. Now therefore, by reason of the provisions of the city charter and ordinances of the City of Louisville, Texas, you are hereby notified to qualify as the law directs for the said office of. How about better? Place number five, I thought you were taking my time. You forgot to tell me. Further said, office of Place Number Five of the City of Louisville City Council, and therefore to enter upon the direction of your duties in accordance with the law in such cases made and provided, witnessed by the hand of the seal of the City of Louisville on the 20th day of May, 2013. Rudy, thank you so much for sharing so many years, for so much work, Rudy, you know, thank you. Certificate of election, this is the certified that Greg Tierney, at the general election in the City of Louisville, Texas on the 11th day of May, 2013, by virtue of having received the majority of the votes cast, has been elected Councilman Place Number Four of the City of Louisville, Texas, and was on that on the 20th day of May, 2013, certified by canvas of the vote of the city council of the City of Louisville, Texas. Now therefore, by reason of the provisions of the city charter and ordinances of the City of Louisville, Texas, you are hereby notified to qualify as the law directs for the said office of Councilman Place Number Four of the City of Louisville, and therefore to enter upon this discharge of your duties in accordance with the law in such cases made and provided, witnessed by my hand in the set of the seal of the City of Louisville on this 20th day of May, 2013. Just get a picture off the.
Please raise your right hand if you'd like to be high standing.
I agree.
Thomas Blair.
Thomas Blair.
And please be of the office.
For more.
And this is the.
Stay with that.
My duty, my profession, and. And laws. The United. And of this state.
This state.
And the charter. And ordinance. And this. And the law. Thomas Blair. That has not. Reclaiming the. May offer from. Or promise. To contribute. Any money. For valuable things. Or promise. In the office. From public. As rewards. To give. To the public. At the. At the election. And the.
You almost threw me for a loop there, Julie. I looked down there and saw that, I went, whoa. Mr. Tierney, would you like to say any comments?
Just briefly, Mayor, I'm honored to be up here and privileged to serve the City of Louisville again, thank you.
Mr. Durham, would you like?
Mayor, thank you, again, I would just say the same thing, honored and privileged to serve, and I want to thank Mr. Daniels for running a good race for the Place Number Five. Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you both, Emmett. Okay, next we're going to do teen court.
Lord, could you just come up and join me, please?
Do we have one?
No.
Now we're going to do something that we do once a year, it's very special award. We have a lot of people that make this thing such a successful event all year long, so many hours, both as you'll see, some of our most prized students in the community, and also some excellent adult volunteers that work many hours to make this teen court possible, and not only make it possible, but make it a tremendous success over the years, and we've had other cities in the community come and join us because it's been such a successful event. Would you like to say a few words before we kind of get started in this first, and tell a little bit more about what it works?
Okay, I'm Laurie Yonkers, I'm the teen court coordinator. The teen court program is a joint program between the City of Louisville and Flower Mound. Basically, the teen court is an alternative program for any youth that commit a class C misdemeanor offense. Once that youth gets placed into the teen court program, they would not have to pay their fine. What they would do is instead of paying that fine, they would work off their sentence by doing community service hours and jury terms. The main advantage of our teen court program is that the case gets dismissed, so it gives that youth a second chance to just go on with their life and not have a conviction on their record. So that's one of the main advantages of the teen court program. We have kids ages from 13 to 17 who are placed in the teen court program for any class C misdemeanors that they may have committed. And our teen court program is run by all volunteers, high school, middle school, and we use those youth volunteers to run our program. Basically, our youth volunteers serve as jurors, attorneys, prosecutors, defense attorneys, and also bailiffs. So we utilize those youth in several different roles, and they help run our program. So basically, that's how it works, and we just wanted to recognize all of the youth that volunteer all their time. For years, we have some of the volunteers who have been with the teen court program and have volunteered for several years, and we really appreciate their help, and we just wanted to recognize our volunteers who help us run this program.
We certainly want to thank you for all the work that you do each and every year, we appreciate all the effort you put into it, and I also want to recognize one of our farmer mayors who's sitting right over here, thinks he's trying to be cognitivo, but he's not, I saw him, Farmer Mayor Gene Carey is here tonight, and he was very instrumental in making this a big successful program, and we thank you very much for your work in this in the past years, Mayor, thank you. And I know, too, our judge, Judge Holman, is very proud of the way teen court works and what it does for our youth here in this community, what it does for bonding people together here in our community, as well as our police chief, Russ Kerbo, I know he's very proud of the way it works, and he sees the benefits of it helping our youth here in the community, so we're very proud of that. So with that, first, we're going to recognize our graduating teen court volunteers. We'd like to honor the 2013 graduating teen court volunteers with certificates of appreciation. These young people have given their time, talents, and energy to serve as attorneys, jurors, bailiffs, and judges for the Louisville Flower Mountain Court. We appreciate their hard work and dedication to the city, and we'd like to recognize the following individuals. So if you would, if we call your name, if you would come up, and we'd like to get a picture with you, and then if you would stay up here also, because then we'd like to get a group picture with everyone. And I'm going to have her give your name so that I don't butcher it. Jacob Arnett. Jacob, it's a pleasure to meet you, sir, thank you for the work you've done over the years, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me just read this first, and then everyone's, it's basically the same way, it's certificate of appreciation, the Louisville City Council proudly acknowledged, proudly acknowledges Jacob Arnett for his contribution as a volunteer for the Louisville Flower Mountain Court presented on this 20th day of May, 2013. We'll hold that up here, and we'll get us a picture of that.
Yeah.
Once again, congratulations, thank you for your work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Jonathan Biddle. Need it again, or?
Wait, one more, Jonathan, one more, he did flash for it.
We've got to make it look good.
I'm going to look at it.
Spencer Bureau.
Appreciate you making this program work.
Caitlin Kellamire. It's a pleasure to meet you, Ms. Kellamire, and congratulations, and thank you for all the work you've done over the years. Come here. Aleah Kukendall. Ms. Kukendall, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you, too.
Thank you so much for all that you've done over the years, we appreciate it. Hope you make the missus a success. Thank you, ma'am. Madeline Looney. Ms. Looney, it's a pleasure to meet you, and congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work over the years, we appreciate it. Cameron Sharp. Mr. Sharp?
It's a pleasure to meet you, sir, and thank you so much for all you've done, congratulations, appreciate your hard work.
Emily Thompson. Okay. Now, like I said, these are the youth, let's give the youth a big, great hand. And as I mentioned earlier, we also have a lot of adult volunteers, we'd like to also honor our adult volunteers. These volunteers donate their time and knowledge to help the teen court run smoothly, the adults assist with the sign-in table, exit interviews, master jury judges, and jury room monitors. We appreciate their hard work and dedication to the teen court program, and if you would, once again, if we call your name, if you'd come up and get your, and then stay up here, and we'll get your group picture also. Patrick Perkins.
Mr. Perkins, it's a pleasure to meet you, thank you so much for your work and your volunteer, appreciate you, hope you make this thing work.
Jeremy Scroggs.
Mr. Scroggs, it's a pleasure to meet you, thank you so much for working with us, and I hope we make it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. And we just want to tell you, too, that Patrick Perkins and Jeremy Scroggs, Jeremy was a former volunteer who graduated from the program and has come back to assist and mentor current volunteers. He's helped each current volunteer and fills in without hesitation whenever he's needed. We'd like to recognize Jeremy with the Volunteer Award of Distinction. All right, congratulations. Now we have another very special award, and this was made possible, well, I'll just read it and let you understand it. We had a very, a long-term city team member here that retired a couple of years ago, and he wanted to come back and thank those who have helped work, make this teen court work, so you'll hear what they've done. Each year, the City of Louisville honors a teen court volunteer who exemplifies not only outstanding academic achievements, but also a willingness to serve his or her community through dedicated community involvement. This year, we'd like to recognize the 2013 recipient of the Ron and Marilyn Neiman Scholarship. Now that's who I was talking about, Ron and Marilyn Neiman, they decided after retiring that they wanted to fund this scholarship going forward for the rest of their lives, so we're really thankful that they make this possible. The $1,000 scholarship is awarded to one of these lovely men or women standing up here, and the winner this year is Melanie Looney. Let me tell you a little bit about, tell you a little bit about Melanie, I'm sorry, it's Madeline, I'm sorry, Madeline. Madeline is another very outstanding student in the community who resides in Louisville and participates in a homeschool program. She has served as a volunteer for our program since 2009. Madeline was a member of our team last year that won the North Texas Teen Court Competition. She has the ability to inspire other people who surround her. With her resourcefulness and enthusiasm, she has demonstrated excellent leadership skills by mentoring others who are new to the teen court program. Madeline credits teen court for developing her confidence and improving her communication skill with others. She has a proven passion for teen court and has rarely missed a session since volunteering. Madeline plans to attend a community college in the fall, her interests are in the social work field and teaching. It's our pleasure to award her with this very deserving scholarship. Once again, congratulations. Now let's see if we can all scrunch in a little bit, I'll kind of be behind you, so
I'm going to do more than that.
You might want to scrunch, too, you're tall. Come on, kind of get like a like a. Not in the corner, come on. One, two. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Next item on the agenda is the public hearings, consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from light industrial to old town mixed-use two on 0.177 acres located at 320 North Keely Avenue, further identified as Lot Three, Block A, H, D, Williams Edition as requested by Amy Castro, the property owner. The property owner is proposing to rezone the 0.177 acre property to Old Town Mixed Unit Two, Mixed Use Two, in order to allow for an addition to the residence. This request is consistent with the Old Town Zoning Plans Recommendation Designation. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by a vote of seven zero at their May 7th, 2013 meeting. Requestation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. I do not have any cards filled out. Entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Move to close public hearing.
Have a motion to close public hearing by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Councilman Durham?
Mayor, if there's no other, I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented, second by Councilman Ferguson, counselor.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Louisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the .177 acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from light industrial district zoning to old town mixed-use two district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is the visitor citizen forum, at this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Did not have anyone fill out any speaker cards. Next item is the consent agenda, all the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have anyone request, have anything pulled from the consent agenda. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is consideration of preliminary plat for Windell Meadows Edition, a 60.803 acre parcel zoned estate townhouse in general business with 232 residential lots, four HOA maintained right-of-way areas, and two commercial lots located in the northeast quadrant of FM 2288 and FM 544, with one associated variance as requested by G and A Consultants Incorporated representing the property owner. This property has recently, was recently rezoned from general business to a state townhouse in general business with the intent to build 232 single plus you, single-family detached residential units. The lots and homes will conform to the requirements for a detached product in ETH zoning with the exception of one variance to waive the alley requirement thus providing front entry lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat in variance by a vote of six zero at its May 7, 2013 meeting. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve is written.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is consideration of a variance to Louisville Code of Ordinances, two dash two zero one, waiver of special event permit fees in the amount of $1,396.28, and waiver of MCL grand equipment rental fees in the amount of $2,644. Approval of an in-kind support using city staff and equipment, approval of road closures on Church and Charles Streets related to Chalk This Way, which is a festival to be held on June 1, 2013 as requested by the Louis Lakeside Arts Foundation. Chalk This Way is a family-oriented outdoor festival that has been held the past two years in the colony. Will be held in Old Town, but it will be held in Old Town Louisville on Saturday, June 1. City Council already approved award of an art projects grant in the amount of $10,000 on April 1, 2013. The event organizer is seeking additional support in the form of fee waivers and an in-kind assistance. Council approval also is needed for street enclosures because this is a first-time event. Recommendation is City Council approve the request to waive special event and rental fees, approve an in-kind support event, and approve road closures as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve the variance, including the waivers and approvals.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as presented, and a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is consideration of a variance to Louisville City Code, Chapter Six, Land Development Regulations Regarding Waiving the Required Engineering Site Plan and Allowing a Modified Site Plan for Landscaping Only for Joyous Montessori School Located at 223 Oakwood Lane as requested by Duncan Kim of Bear Design Build representing the owner. The subject site, a former daycare, was built to the general development standards of the city in 1988. It was discovered by staff that the facility was preparing to reopen. Fire inspection records indicate the building had been out of operation since January 11, 2011, which triggers current development standards as it is currently legal non-conforming. The existing site is too small to comply with the current general development ordinance requirements such as additional parking spaces to meet code, on-site vehicle stacking distances, increasing the existing driveway turning radius, and meeting landscape requirements. The owner has agreed to provide a modified landscape plan. Staff review indicates that there are no significant impacts in allowing the continuance of a legal non-conforming facility. Recommendation is the City Council approve the variances as set forth in the caption above. Did have a gentleman here, Mahavier Semol, who filled out a card. He does not wish to speak, but he is here in support and was, is willing to answer any question if anybody had any questions. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, I am in support of this. I would ask that we approve this because we've got to remember on these areas that are going, we're going to go in and have redevelopment done. It is more difficult to get the properties to work and to fit within our current GDO, and we've got to take all that into consideration. With that, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Durham, second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is a tabled item, consideration of ordinances amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter Nine, by adding Article Four, Sections Nine dash eight six through nine dash eight seven, adopting the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code with local amendments and standards. This item was tabled from the May 6, 2013 City Council meeting in order to provide each council member with a copy of the code. Staff is submitting the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code to the City Council for adoption. The new code was recommended by the Neighborhood Preservation Committee and is necessary to augment building and code enforcement division initiatives. Recommendation is council adopt the 2012 IPMC with local amendments and standards as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I move to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve.
Second.
A second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Counselor. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending Chapter Nine nuisances of the Louisville City Code of Ordinances by adding a new Article Four, Property Maintenance Code, adopting the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code with local amendments, providing a repealer, providing severability, a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of ordinance adopting a rate schedule for Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Tex Division, Atmos Mid-Tex, or the company regarding the company's rate review mechanism filing in all cities exercising original jurisdiction, diction, I'm sorry. The city is a member of the Atmos City Steering Committee. In 2007, ACSC and Atmos Mid-Tex agreed to implement an annual rate review mechanism known as the Rate Review Mechanism as a temporary replacement for this statutory mechanism known as Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program. The first RRM tariff expired in 2011, and ACSC and Atmos reached a tentative agreement on the form of the RRM tariff to be in effect for a four-year period prior, a period from 2013 to 2017. The increase to the residential customer charge shall not exceed 50 cents per month in any given year. This ordinance implements the RRM process and will not affect current rate until the next filing anticipated in July 2013. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, that's at five cents, not 50 cents.
What did I put? It is five cents. I read that. It's 50 cents. I beg your pardon. Yes, it says, "The increase to the residential customer shall not exceed five cents per month in any given year." Thank you for the question, sir.
Appreciate that. Move to approve is written.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as presented.
Second.
A second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, approving and adopting rate schedule, RRM rate review mechanism for Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Tex Division to be enforced in the city for a period of time as specified in the rate schedule, adopting a savings clause determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, declaring an effective date and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and ACSC legal counsel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is consider and take action on an ordinance providing for the award and authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Louisville, Texas General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2013, levying a tax for payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an escrow agreement, calling certain bonds for redemption, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions related thereto. If I could, I'd like to ask Mr. Jackson Hughes to come forward and give us a presentation on this. If you go ahead and kind of do this and item ten at the same time, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Will do, Mayor. Jason Hughes, First Southwest. Good to be with you tonight. You should have a handout that summarizes the two bond sales that we undertook today, and we were selling general obligation bonds. This was the remaining authorization from your 2003 bond election, and then water and sewer revenue bonds. So $13,530,000 is what the city will net on the general obligation bonds, and that's amortized over 16 years at a 2.702 percent fixed interest rate. So obviously, a very low rate. On the water and sewer side, 5.555 million, again with the 16-year amortization at a 2.79 percent interest rate. So obviously, it's a very favorable time if you're funding your CIP to be doing that. I didn't go back and look historically, but I would guess that these are probably some of the lowest, if not the lowest, interest rates we've ever received. On the rating side, you carried AAA ratings for both S and P and Fitch on the general obligation side. You were AAA on the water and sewer side from S and P. And this time, 2011, you were actually upgraded to a AA plus from Fitch on the water and sewer. This year, we were upgraded to AAA. So you have four AAA ratings, which is almost unheard of. So one thing I thought that I would include, if you look on that page, is we have S and P and Fitch, the AAA-rated water, sewer, and drainage. So basically, any kind of revenue system, rated cities throughout Texas. And as you can see, there's only nine of them there. So again, that's a tremendous credit to the city. One thing that I would add, just very briefly, there's basically four main things that go into a rating. It's the economy, which you really don't have that much power or influence over. Your finances, which the city has always been very fiscally conservative. You've always had strong reserve levels, things of that nature. You're very conservative on the budgeting side. Your debt, you are a very low-debt city. And in addition to that, you've managed your CIP well. You've been able to delay things when you needed to, or if you had the tax rate capacity or user capacity, you could accelerate it. And then finally, is the management. And that spans from council-approved policies to just the tenure and the expertise of your staff. So this is something that did not happen overnight. This is a culmination of a number of years of work, and again, just a positive trend that's been put forth by the city, both by the elected officials and by your staff. So you're to be congratulated for that. With that, I would recommend both cells. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Well, we certainly want to thank you and First Southwest for the work you've done with us and walking this path with us. And as you said, I want to certainly thank our staff for doing such a wonderful job over the years in being very diligent and making sure that we do stay physically responsible and that we do run a tight ship and a very conservative fiscal responsibility.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that. They don't give those, as you said, they don't give those AAA ratings away very easily.
No. We've already petitioned for the quadruple A, so we're waiting to hear back on that. So.
Oh. And I certainly want to thank council for over the years, for your diligent leadership to make sure that we act responsibly and physically well within our means here in the city, and yet, at the same time, try to give our citizens what they want in their community here in this city. So we appreciate all of it.
Mayor, if I might, I forgot. We have Julie Partain here from Bracewell Giuliani, the Bond Counsel of the city, and so she can certainly answer any kind of legal questions you may have as well.
Thank you for being here tonight, Julie. Also, anybody have any questions, Julie? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to say on this?
No, other than I think that the 2003 election that voters approved that authorized bonds for street projects primarily, although there were a couple of public safety projects as well, can be seen, the results of that can be seen in some of the subdivisions that benefited from those improvements, and we're anxious to finish up that program with this last issuance and continue to make those types of improvements.
And I think that goes to be seen with the citizens throughout the community, and not just here in our city, but in the communities. Interesting, the other day, one of our former mayors of Highland Village, Dr. McGiermont, sent a, put a post that they own Facebook, and he said, "Who's, who's out front in, in making a new future or improving the future?" And he said, "Flower Mound, Highland Village, Louisville?" with a question mark. And he said, "No, Louisville. Let me tell you why." You read his email, and he talks about how that he's now taken a position. He's been out, and he lives in Highland Village, lived in Highland Village, actually, and he had his practice both here in Louisville and in Flower Mound. But he is now going to be moving his practice to Sulfur Springs, and so he was putting his house up, sale sold right-of-way. But until they could get his house in Sulfur Springs ready, he needed a place to live. So he moved back to Louisville, where he, from whence he originally came, he and his wife originally came. And he said he just was amazed at the transitions we're doing here, the improvements that we're making here in the community, and how proud he was to say that he was a resident of Louisville now. So it really made me feel good. Sir, a former mayor of a surrounding city say that too. Once again, we appreciate all of y'all's help.
Thank you.
I forgot where it was.
I need to move.
Okay. Councilman Ferguson?
Mayor, I'm pleased to move to approve this ordinance as stated.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Tierney. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Louisville, Texas General Obligation Bonds Series 2013, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement and a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is consideration and take action on an ordinance providing for the award and authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Louisville, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2013, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an escrow agreement, calling certain bonds for redemption, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions related thereto. We just heard the, Mr. Jason Hughes, give us an overview on that. So, Councilman Durham?
Mayor, you might want to go ahead and read those. You have revised comments, I believe, don't you?
Yes.
No? Okay.
The attorney told me I didn't need to. I'll go ahead and read them. Don't they get the story straight?
I did not talk to her.
Okay, do you want it on item nine and 10 then? We've already done nine.
Well, I would suggest going ahead and doing it so that it's clear that there's a minor variation compared to the original caption.
Okay. The administrative comments on item nine was the issuance of $12,455,000 of City of Louisville, Texas General Obligation Improvement Bonds Series 2013 will provide funds for constructing and improvements to the city's streets, sidewalks, and related drainage improvements and costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. And for item 10, the administrative comment is the issuance of $5,205,000 of City of Louisville, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Improvement Bonds Series 2013 will provide funds for acquiring and installing improvements, additions, and extensions to the city's waterwork and sewer system and costs associated with the issuance of bonds.
And Mayor, the primary difference there is, of course, as we discussed in the workshop, that we're not doing the advance refunding because the financial circumstances did not pan out in terms of the interest savings that we would have, or that we were anticipating. So that's the difference in the numbers from the caption earlier to what you're approving tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Durham.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Louisville, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds Series 2013, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement and a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is consideration of an appointment of a City of Louisville representative on the Upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors. Steve Backus, Assistant City Manager, presently serves as the City of Louisville Representative on the Upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors. His term will be expiring on May 31, 2013. Council may wish to appoint another City of Louisville representative to serve on the Upper Trinity Water District Board of Directors. Representatives on the UTRWD Board of Directors serve a term of four years. Lathan Watts, former City Council Member, has indicated his willingness to serve in this position. Recommendation is the council appoint a representative to serve as a board member on the UTRW. on the UTRWD Board of Directors as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Councilman Gilmore, I'm going to go over to you, just because Councilman Tierney hadn't had a chance to really talk over this much. Is that's all right with you, Mr. Tierney? Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Lathan Watts to serve in this position for the city. He understands the politics of North Texas, understands that this can be a contentious board, and has served Lewisville well in the past.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to appoint Lathan Watts to the position as presented, and a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm going to be voting against this, and I expressed my reasons in the workshop, but I'd rather also present them here. This, this term that's expiring is to be, can be renewed, or it can put a new person into this position, either one, at any time. That can be changed. It's not locked in once the decision's made. I would prefer to have seen Mr. Backus stay on as the recognized mouthpiece for the City of Lewisville for no better term, and allow Mr. Watts to understudy him until such time as Mr. Watts is convinced he's prepared, and then make the switch. So, for that reason, I'm going to vote against it.
Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with Councilman Ferguson. I would not be opposed to continuing to look for qualified applicants, but I know former Councilman Watts, and I do believe that he is a solid candidate and will be effective in this role, and I think with the fact that you, Mayor, have put some pressure on Steve Backus to remain in that position for as long as needed to groom Lathan Watts until he is ready, I think I'm going to be comfortable in approving Lathan Watts.
Thank you, sir. And I'll address that in a moment, too. I do think, when I visited with the city manager on this issue, we had talked, it's been coming up for some time. And while, Mr. Backus, you've done a superb job. As you well know, you're our go-to man on this. I always call you and say, "Okay, give me the real scoop," and you do a great job, and you do it in layman's terms, and I certainly appreciate that. And I have visited with the city manager, and we fully do ask that you stay on board there and attend the meetings, as you have in the past, to help walk him through probably at least the first year that he serves on the deal, so that he can make sure he has his, his understanding of what goes on in the background that would be needed for this. So, and I understand you're willing to do that, and Mr. City Manager, you're willing to allow him to do that?
Certainly.
Great. Okay. Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay. We are down to reports. Asia. Did you have anything you wanted to report? We're certainly glad to have you tonight, man. We appreciate your work. Bob? Chief? Linda? Chief?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Just a couple of things. As we approach the Memorial Day weekend coming up, we'll be participating as several law enforcement agencies around the state will be in the Click It or Ticket campaign. So, I just wanted to take this time to urge motorists to remember to buckle up, especially kids. Everybody in the vehicle has to be buckled up, otherwise they're likely to get a ticket this, this week, on through the weekend. And also, we know that people will be flocking to the lake this weekend, so we'd everybody be cautious about the operation of their boats on the lake and be safe.
Great. Well, it's two meetings in a row now. Miss Carroll, she's okay, I take it.
We do have a lake report, though, for you, Mayor, so don't worry, but I don't have a report.
Brenda?
As Carroll's understudy, I'd like to let you know that the lake level right now is 516.92.
And that is?
Approximately a little over five feet low.
A little bit over five feet low. And the reason I bring that up is, in all sincerity, is because, as Chief just mentioned, especially this weekend, it's going to be a very highly active lake, a lot of boating and other activities, swimming things out there. With the lake being that low, there's a lot of stumps and things that aren't normally there, and sometimes they're just under the surface of the water, so we do encourage everyone to be extra careful this way.
How is that, that five feet low for this time of the year? Does anybody know if that's normal, or is that?
Steve will.
It's not normal.
It's not bad at this time of the year, so we're in good shape. We'll carry the summer.
Thank you.
It's been worse, but it's been better. Last year was a little bit better, but we got through it, so.
Yes, sir. Last year, we were at conservation at 521.
Right.
522.
Right. So, I just want to remind everyone to be sure and conserve water whenever possible. And I believe, I'm going to back up here just a second, too, the two chiefs, I believe you have your Battle of the Badge coming up pretty soon, isn't that?
It's in June 8th, or something like that, I think.
We'll have one more, McCouncilman, before that, but I just wanted to give you all a little prep time here, make sure you're getting everything ready. I can tell you all, working out heavy.
We both agree, we're not playing.
Mr. Ferris? Mr. Backus? Once again, Mr. Backus, we do appreciate you serving on all the different committees you have over the years, and especially this Upper Trinity Committee, because it is such a vital importance to the future of the water for the City of Lewisville going on for the next unforeseeable future. So, we thank you very much for your time and work that you put in. Councilman Durham?
I would just ask everybody to remember the reason for Memorial Day and to be safe in your travels.
Councilman Tierney, welcome back, sir.
Thank you, sir. Honored to be here.
Anything, comments?
No.
You're good?
Happy to be here.
Councilman Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind folks that the 2025 plan is off to a roaring start, but we need your ideas. There are going to be several opportunities coming up. The first is our Big Ideas Workshop on Tuesday, June 4th, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., at the Medical Center of Lewisville Grand Theater, right here in Old Town. It'll be 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock is an informal open house, followed by the 6:00 welcome and introduction, and then we'll go into various breakouts, workshops, and whatnot to get ideas. Following the June 4th event, we have two big ideas gatherings where we can get more information from our residents, and you're welcome to attend as many of these as you can make. Wednesday, June 19th, at the Senior Activity Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and Thursday, July 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., at the Glenmore Savage Community Room in the Lewisville Municipal Annex, right near the library. Folks, if you have any questions, reach out to your city staff, city council, go to the website and click on the 2025 logo. We need your feedback. We want your feedback. We want to know what this city looks like when it hits 100. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mr. Gilmore, Councilman Gilmore, I certainly want to thank you for helping me with this process and filling in for me in functions that I haven't been able to attend. I appreciate your leadership in that role.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to congratulate Chief Tittle on a fantastic Keeping Tradition Alive, huge turnout. Everybody had a lot of fun. I don't think anybody got arrested, so, did they? Brought a lot of visitors to town, a great, great night and two days, really. So, it's, it goes beyond the fire department. It's just a great opportunity for the City of Lewisville, and appreciate the yells department putting that together and...
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I would like to say, just to follow up with that, I can't tell you how many firefighters from all across the country came up to me during those two days to thank us for hosting this event. It's our sixth year, and a lot of the attendees are four, five, six-year repeat attendees, so obviously there's some value in coming here, and that's why they keep coming. But the one thing I would like to pass along is how many of them would tell me that they can tell that it's a cooperative effort throughout this whole city, both support from, from mayor and council, and then city management, city staff, to be able to put this on, and they can see that, and most of them would say, "I just wish that our city could work that well as a team as well." So, that's kudos to everybody for the support on this event, that we're able to put on such a good event. So, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Well, we're all in it together, and I think it was just a great, great weekend for, or week, end of week for that event, and a lot of people came out. I mean, there were, I don't know, 15, 1600 people out there, I think, at least. So, with that, MCL Grand, we're coming up on the Sounds of Lewisville Summer Concert Series. The first show, June 4th, these are on Tuesday nights, so the first show is June 4th. It's Downtown Fever, and then other shows that'll follow be Brave Combo, the Killers will be coming back, Nollins Gumbo Kings, and you can go to soundsoflewisville.com and see the full schedule. And again, those are on Tuesday nights. The one, normally they start at 7:00. The one exception is going to be, the June 4th will be right after the 2025 opening event at the MCL Grand, which starts at 4:00, ends at 8:00, so the concert will start right after, so you can just go right from 2025 to the concert, have a great time. Got a couple of stage shows going, Snoopy the Musical and Fiddler on the Roof, and you can go to mclgrand.com and check on times and dates for that. Chalk This Way, June 1st, I'm very excited about, something I've been working on for a long time myself, and so really, really excited, very much a family-oriented event, and hope you all will come out and take a look at it. There'll be activities outdoors, there'll be activities over at the MCL Grand. Got a lot of different arts groups signing up to put on shows at the MCL for free, so also have David Gallegos Band. You can go on YouTube and check them out, and the Stone Lees, which is a Rolling Stone tribute band, they'll be performing. And there is free yoga in the courtyard at the MCL Grand on Monday and Wednesday nights in June, so a repeat of last year. Bring your yoga mat. I will not be there, I'm sorry. I don't twist well. And then we've got art shows in the gallery. Always check those out, see what's going on. One last thing I want to bring up, it seems a little lonely up here not having Councilman Vaughn next to me, and so I want you all to keep him in mind. He's in the hospital under doctor's care for a back injury, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers, hope for a speedy recovery, and hope to see him back the next council meeting. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councillor? Julie? Julie, I want to say thank you to you and your staff for the great job you did on election. I know it's kind of a tiring moment, but yet I think you feel very well rewarded when it's all over with, so we appreciate the work that you all do. And also, once again, we want to thank you for being here, and thank you for the service you do each and every day. We really appreciate it. Chief, Chief Tittle, I apologize, couldn't make this year's event. This is the first, first time I've missed it, but had other things I had to get done, but I've heard nothing but just, just wonderful accolades about that, how this year was just a really blowout year, and they really appreciated all the things that we added to it this year, so look forward to doing it again next year. Appreciate it.
Well, it's understandable. I understand you have a busy schedule, but you were missed and look forward to being there next year.
Thanks, sir. With that, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, property acquisition, and Section 551.087, deliberating, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Councillor? Do we need to say anything about the consultation with councillor? We're okay with that? Okay. Okay, now we'll convene into closed session.